Okay, welcome everyone. Let's please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle Lee, can I call you up here, please, since it's a pleasure to have you here? Please stay standing. Kelly's gonna deliver us the word in prayer. Wonderful to see you, Michelle.
Thank you so much. It's wonderful to be here this morning. To see all the smiling faces this morning. Father God, we just want to thank you for who you are this morning. We thank you for one more day that you have given us to tell you that we love you. Father God, we are interceding today for our government, for our commissioners, our county, employees, department heads, little God. We intercede this morning for the cities thereof. Since we are in Warren City, we intercede for our mayor here, his cabinet, Father God, but we're asking that there will be peace in the spirit of those that we have given to govern over us and have authority over us. We ask that in the name of Jesus. We also ask, Father God, that everyone receive access because you are accessible to all of us who believe that Jesus is the Son of God. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus. In Jesus' name we have prayed. Amen and amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Michelle Lee.
You're very welcome.
Okay. We do have a public hearing for an annexation scheduled for noon today that has been canceled. Our next public workshop will be held on Tuesday, September 30th, 2025 at 10:30 a.m. And our next regular meeting will be held on the following Wednesday, October 1st at 10:30 a.m. Commissioners, if we could suspend the regular agenda to present.
Oh, first.
Oh, roll. I'm sorry. Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
We're going to suspend the regular agenda items to present resolution.
You want to go down to 16?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll start with that. Item number 16 is to acknowledge the retirement of Mr. Ronald Watson from his position as water superintendent with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective September 30th, 2025. Ron will be retiring after more than 31 years of faithful and dedicated service to the residents of Trumbull County. The Board of Commissioners joins Gary Newbrow, Trumbull County Sanitary Engineer, Bill McCosky, Assistant Sanitary Engineer, Bob Morano, Sanitary Engineer Controller and Staff in congratulating Ron for his leadership and dedication while wishing him the longest, most joyous retirement possible for which he is most deserving.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, and with regret. We, we're definitely going to have a major loss and our sanitary engineer, Gary, who's here, has mentioned that you've been with us for 31 years and we, you're going to be a hard, definitely a hard replacement. So, we, we know that we have somebody that is your training in your position, but we appreciate 31 years of service that you have given us. Thank you very much. And Denny, do you want to read the resolution?
Sure. We have a resolution here by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners commending Ron Watson for his many accomplishments in the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department. Whereas the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners joins the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department in paying a fond farewell to Ron Watson. And whereas Ron will be retiring from the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department after 31-plus years of dedicated public service. He started his career in 1994 when he was hired as an environmental engineer. He was promoted 97 to Senior Environmental Engineer and in 2020 to Water Superintendent. His license certification includes Class II wastewater collection license, water distribution Class 1 license, and a backflow certification. His plan of retirement includes spending time in his pole barn and tinkering on various projects around his house and property. Ron enjoys helping his friends and neighbors with any needs they have using his tractor. He plans on taking a trip to Las Vegas later this year, enjoying his time off. Whereas Ron Watson will be greatly missed by the sanitary engineer staff, Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, and other county agencies that have the privilege of working with him. We wish Ron the best as he turns to a new chapter in his life. And therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners hereby commends Ron Watson for his hard work and outstanding contributions to the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department and the residents of Trumbull County. Our sincerest thanks and best wishes. Signed, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners.
Can we give a round of applause, everyone, please?
Go up, Ron, and then we're going to do a little presentation and picture and.
If you have any comments, Mr. Watson, you're welcome to. Yeah. Well said. We'll take a couple pictures. Your sisters are here?
Yes.
Would you like them to accompany us in the pictures?
Sure, yes.
Yeah, let's go frontwards and front of the camera.
He may have to go back, he may have to go back to work after he goes to Vegas.
Yeah, he will.
Ron, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, I just wanted to express my appreciation. I mean, the amount of work that he does, it's just phenomenal out there. Not just, you know, answering the call at 2:00 in the morning on a freezing night, but it's the regulatory end of things. He, I get emails at least once a week from EPA. We want these samples. We want lead and copper. We want asset management plans. We want contingency plans. All of this. I mean, it's an incredible amount of paperwork that our office has to go through. And we have to go through it times seven. We have seven water districts that we have to do all this with. Compared with, you know, cities and our surrounding area, they all have one to deal with. We're dealing with seven. And that's probably one of the largest things that we'll miss with Ron is expertise in all that regulatory labor that's necessary for these districts. I mean, that's where we're really going to miss them. So, Ron, I just wanted to stand my appreciation for all the years of service. And he's really going to be missed, so.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate that. Thank you again, Mr. Watson. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Continue. Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated September 16th, 2025, and the regular meeting dated September 17th, 2025, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number five is to adopt a resolution recognizing the 2025 Trumbull County Centenarians. National Centenarian Day is observed annually on September 22nd as a day to celebrate and honor those who have reached the age of 100. It is with great pleasure that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners joins the residents of Trumbull County to recognize with respect and admiration the contribution of senior citizens in our community. The longevity of life is a blessing for these individuals and for a community which benefits from the knowledge, creativity, and experiences these individuals bring to all.
Motion to.
I was just going to read the note.
Read the special note, please.
A planned presentation of the Centenarian Proclamation will be held at the Warren Public Library on September 26th, 2025 at 11:00 a.m. to honor all individuals listed on the proclamation.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Okay. Diane. Can you let us know? I'll read this, but who's with us today?
I believe we have Mike Salcone with us. He is one of our 22 centenarians for the 2025 class. And if Mike wants to speak or say anything, we can take a microphone to him. Glad to be here.
Okay.
How old, how old are you, Mike?
101. God bless you.
And who's the lovely lady next to him?
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Okay. Well, it's a pleasure to have, pleasure to have you here, and I would like to read the resolution and proclamation. This is by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners in celebration and recognition of Trumbull County centenarians. 100 years. Whereas the National Centenarian Day observed annually on September 22nd is a day to celebrate and honor those who have reached the age of 100, and whereas it is with great pleasure that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners joins the residents of Trumbull County and recognizes with respect and admiration the contribution of senior citizens in our community. The longevity of life is a blessing for those individuals and for a community which benefits from the knowledge, creativity, and experiences these individuals bring to all. And whereas Dorothy Marie Thompson Jewell was born in 1917, the United States entered the global conflict World War I in April. Whereas Evelyn Fisher and Helen Prince were both born in April 1918, having two local women aged 107, both with April birthdays. Of importance to note that Ofa Mae Johnson became the first woman allowed to join the U.S. Marine Corps in 1918. In 1918, pink was for boys because it was a stronger color, and the more delicate blue was reserved for girls. Whereas Mary Dolores Infant, Jefferson Latell, Ruth Ketzelen, and Melissa Minor were born in 1922. The first ever 3D movie was The Power of Love, a silent film released in 1922. It was also the film to have an alternate, alternative ending, and the viewer could choose between the happy and sad endings, both shot in 2D, by closing one eye or the other. No copies exist. Whereas Virginia Bass, Miriam A. Hopkins, Vesta McKay, and Teresa Montecalvo Vravoski were born in 1923, the most famous person in America was probably Babe Ruth. The first game was at Yankee Stadium, also known as the House that Ruth built, and it was played in New York City. Whereas Bertha Gatta, Norma Gatta, Robert Horner, Alma Mae Ward Knapp, Geraldine Neely, Steve Soroka, Eleanor Merzarksi, and Mike Salcone were born in 1924. Walt Disney created the first cartoon, Ellis's Wonderland. The black and white short was the first in a series of Walt Disney's famous Ellis comedies. Whereas Joseph Perone, Iona Blasco, and Joanne Ullley were born in 1925 and now Trumbull County's newest centenarians. That year, Ford introduced its first truck, the Model T Runabout. The song Sweet Georgia Brown was written, and Sears' first brick and mortar store was established. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners believes that all centenarians have greatly contributed to the betterment of Trumbull County as outstanding citizens and loyal friends, signed by the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners. Can we please give them a round of applause, everyone? Um, I would like to, I'm sorry. We would like to get a picture i- if we could.
We could stand behind.
We could stand behind. Okay, sure. Uh, thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. And Raymond, I think that's something that we definitely have to get in the Tribune. Wouldn't you agree? Raymond, 101? Thank you.
Thank you very much. You too. We'll see you next year.
Madam Clerk.
Okay, so I'll continue with item number six to approve the purchase from Hudson Communications for the purchase of 12 Tate TP 990 P25, 7/800 BHF/UHF multiband portable radios for the Trumbull County Emergency Management Agency Mobile Command Post in the amount of $58,581.50. Purchase of the multiband radios will include all encryption software, program, programming, bank chargers, speaker mics, and lithium ion batteries.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number seven is to authorize the Board of Commissioners to join with the Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney to file an application with the Court of Common Pleas for the appointment of Attorney Cooper Bowen in the law firm of Montgomery Johnson, LLP, as legal counsel for the Trumbull County Court of Common Pleas in defending the appeal of or other legal challenge to Trumbull County Court of Common Pleas case numbers 2025-IR296 and 339, and in the defense of any other administrative order of the Court of Common Pleas related to the operation of the Clerk of Court's office.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number eight is to approve agreements between the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and the institutions on the submitted list. The agreements create 22 training opportunities and 10 job opportunities at a total cost of $228,119.68.
Make a motion and we approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number nine is to approve a biennial revision to the Trumbull County's Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Plan. Trumbull County has expanded the services provided through the Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Program effective August, October 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 10 is to adopt a resolution reappointing Mr. Michael Murphy of Ashtabula County as a member of the Northeast Ohio Community Alternative Program, NeoCap Facility Governing Board for the term expiring November 9th, 2028.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 11 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed, Enbridge Gas and ASW Pipeline LLC, Ludcore Group.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 12 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permits to haul steel coils requested by the company listed, J-Road Transportation Services, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 13 is to approve the submitted satisfaction of mortgage. Instrument numbers listed for Joseph J. Pavlik Jr. and Tammy L. Pavlik, who were assisted through Trumbull County's home program in 2015. The home mortgage was for a 10-year declining term. Mr. and Mrs. Pavlik have satisfied all terms and conditions for said mortgage.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 14 is to award a contract to the lowest and best bidder, Proscape Septic and Landscape Contractors, to replace three home sewage treatment systems to be paid for through the Project Year 24/Project Year 25 HSTS Reserve Program in the total amount of $42,838. All three households qualified for 100% assistance. Proscape Septic and Landscape Contractors, along with two other installers, submitted bids for five HSTS replacements included in the bid document and processed for income-qualified households eligible for assistance through the HSTS Reserve Program.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 15 is to award a contract to the lowest and best bidder, KJ Excavation LLC, to replace two home sewage treatment systems, HSTS, to be paid for through Project Year 25 HSTS Reserve Program in the amount of $32,550. One of the households qualified for 100% assistance, with one qualifying for 85% assistance. The award of the household receiving 85% assistance is contingent upon the payment of their local share in the amount of $2,482.50.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 16, we read. Item 17, to approve the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Gabe Lair for the position of utility and account clerk floater with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective October 20th, 2025. Pay range 5, 1787 per hour pursuant to the authorized job posting from July 30th through August 8th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 18 is to authorize Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, to issue the notice to proceed to MJD Excavating, Inc. for the Sheraton Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project known as County Project Number 5-S-23 in Vienna Township within the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metropolitan Subdistrict. Notice to proceed shall be recorded on the journal for record purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 19 is to receive the request to withdraw the petition for annexation seeking to annexed properties situated in the township of Weathersfield, Trumbull County, Ohio, and further known as being parcel numbers 24-310-900, 311-300, and 311-400 of Guirmar Properties, Inc., comprising a total area of 122.632 acres as fully described in the submitted exhibits A1, 2, and 3, which territory is both in Weathersfield Township and contiguous to the Municipal Corporation of the City of Niles.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioners, that includes our regular agenda items. We will move to public comment. If anyone would like to come to the podium, give us your name at this time under public comment. If we have none.
We have some guests from building trades. Anything on your mind, Phyllis?
Construction.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I see Mr. Gargano's here. John, I mentioned it yesterday about the non-medical transportation contract. I've been receiving some phone calls. It's my understanding that at the end of September, September 30th, that contract's going to run out.
John Gargano, Trumbull County JFS. That's correct, Your Honor. Our. Yeah, no, yeah. I've elevated you.
Yeah.
But anyway, yes, we have gone out to bid. There has been one successful bidder. And I have been speaking with their attorney. As a matter of fact, just coming over here, I had a conversation, and they will be, unless there's something that I don't see, there'll, there'll be one vendor providing that service.
So you did have contact with him this morning?
The attorney.
Right, yeah. Because it's my understanding prior to that, there was no contact.
Well, you couldn't have any contact until the bids were submitted and opened up.
Okay.
And the attorney contacted me yesterday, but I was not in the office. So I talked to him this morning, and we're moving forward with that vendor.
Yeah, because my concern was that, you know, the contractor was going to expire, and then we'd be without a contract and.
No, we're not.
No, no one would be.
I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but we're working toward getting that all taken care of. And then, I don't know if it'll be next week, but hopefully the week after, we would have that before the board.
Okay. Okay, well, I think the deadline's what, September 30th?
September 30th is when the contracts, the present contracts.
So why, why the delay? That's my question.
Well, there's a process that has to be gone through with evaluating and certain processes in-house. And that's taken a little bit more time than I anticipated. But I just talked to one of the fiscal individuals, and they were working on it. And I asked them to, you know, expedite it. And again, on the way over, I communicated with the vendor's attorney who had contacted me to get this thing moving forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Okay, still under public comment? Michelle Lee's smiling back there. I know she's feeling well. Welcome again. Nice to have you in the house. Do you have a public comment? Yes, she does.
I do want to thank all of you for your prayers and thinking about me while I was away from you for a little while. But I also thank God for, you know, the department heads and, and the employees that are in this building. And I thank God that you hear what I say when I come to this podium, not just in prayer, but to encourage you. You may not like what I say, but it's still to encourage you. And so I thank you all, and I appreciate you all, and truly, from the, from my heart, my mind and my soul, I thank God for you. Right?
Thank you, Michelle Lee. We surely appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Shelley. We surely appreciate that. Okay, Commissioners, with...
I have this one little thing today.
Okay.
Um, just wanna remind residents, uh, Ohio's deer hunting season starts this weekend on the twenty-seventh. Trumbull County's in the top five in the state in the number of deer hunters, number of deer harvested. One little thing about management, real quick. If we don't harvest deer, Mother Nature has a way to come in and take care of the population, or any species out there. They, um, we've removed natural predators, mountain lions, wolves, things like that. So, man plays a part of predator to keep the numbers in check. In southeast Ohio right now, we have a deer disease that's running around called Epizootic Chmaragic Disease. In Athens County, many parts of southeast Ohio, Morgan County, um, the traditional West Virginia border counties, there are farmers literally finding fifty, sixty, seventy dead deer on their property. And i- it, it's caused by the little nooseum bugs, little midges that carry a disease with them. When we had hurricanes and stuff in the past, a lot of those bugs were blowing up the gut of the United States, uh, into, to Ohio, and our deer weren't resistant to that, that strain of disease. And when you get a dry season, um, you have an outbreak, and we, we have this in to the point where the state is considering cancelling or reducing the, the hunting season in southeast Ohio to protect the, the deer population. Some farms are literally losing ninety percent of the deer in their, in those counties, um, due to this disease. We also saw this happen last summer, uh, with ducks and geese. There were parts of California and other states where millions of ducks and geese were turning up dead, and it was from avian flu. And again, when you get overpopulation, when there's too many animals for the carrying capacity of the land, Mother Nature steps in and thins the population by disease, and that's a horrible way to go for the deer, horrible way to go. So, man does play their part as predator, uh, to keep the populations in check. We've got a healthy deer population here in Trumbull County. We don't have any of this EHD or CWD or any other deer diseases have not been detected in our county, thankfully. And I think that's because there is a good management, uh, plan here where hunters keep the numbers in check so they don't overpopulate, get stressed out, and then be susceptible to disease. So, think about that when you see guys in orange this season or camouflage. They're doing their part for conservation, they're doing their part to keep the numbers in check, they're helping the farmers keep the crops protected, and, uh, we're not overharvesting anything. The state does a great plan with that, and these hunters, like fishermen, are bringing economy to our county. You know, there, there's literally tens of thousands of people be hunting Trumbull County this fall, bringing their wallets, shopping in our stores, going to Bass Pro Shop, adding to our sales tax, and, and spending millions of dollars in our county this thing, so, you know, please welcome them. Hunter's not a bad guy, he's a good guy in this situation, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, with that in mind, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
I will second that motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.